We normally don't start our first item on the agenda until all three of us are here. Assuming that we're expecting Jason, right?
Yes, I haven't heard that.
Haven't heard it otherwise, so. We can sign things. So we do sign the trash and recycles, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we shut the door? No, it's good.
The bothersome.
I think they're having a good time down there.
Tell me you closed it. Close the room.
It's the late night.
Two more tobacco prints.
Or a sign.
Gonna sign those. Now, did we say that we vote every time we didn't sign those? Or did the vote yes last time, cover those as well?
What you've been doing is approving them as complete, not signing them. We took off the signature spot on, so essentially you're issuing the permit.
So we should take a vote on those two.
Do you have to sign them, say, if you want to sign?
Speaking of church and state, I know this one up is a church.
Not with the bag of light.
No, not with the tobacco. You probably shouldn't have the shade cloth, because that kind of, that's the signal for exactly a session.
Is that the secret signal?
What?
That's the secret signal.
That's the secret signal. Not much of this crowd, Jason's proceed. See what he missed?
I would say we should stop.
We should stop. First item on the agenda is 24 Indian Road, a well variance request. You hear that? Do you like to present?
Sure. For the record, my name is Brian Melissi, Woodman and Associates. Here with me is Al Costas of Firehouse Builders. Of course, for the board, who's chairman. These are the green cards that went up for the Buttermore locations.
This is nice, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are here tonight to ask the board for a variance to the well regulations, in particular, the well destruction regulations. When Mr. Costas grabbed, started to develop a lot at 24 Indian Road, when they were raising the existing house, they ended up pulling out the old point well prior to filing or getting any permits to do so. Very quickly, we are here in front of you tonight to ask for that variance such that Al can move on and sell the home. Al's right here. I believe there was a letter in the package kind of explaining. I can read that into the record, or if you would like, or we can have Al speak. But very simply, we are here asking for a variance to that well regulation.
And members, any questions?
Yeah, have you ever been in town before? Have you built anything in town before?
No.
Okay.
Jason's state, Ira, any comments on this?
The only comment I have is that the well regulations are in place even to include the destruction for service. They're meant to be able to pick up if it was a drilled well or a shallow well or something and the process to be done right, so we don't have to drag conduit to water table. So the concern is always, you know, what type of well is it and how it's going to be destroyed? My concern there would have been that since it's usually shallow to ledge and a deep water table, that it would have been what we call a drilled well or some type of artesian well, not a point well. We don't have the record of what it is. Al says it was a point well, so we have whatever it is that's there that's now gone.
It's a fact on the ground, we're in the ground at this point. So they're pretty much asking, in some ways, asking forgiveness for.
That's essentially it. Many regulations very clear, so because it wasn't done in sequence, it wasn't done with a permit. You know, the request is to do it without the permit, to do it without being a component of the regulations.
So everything in that area has been covered over?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a new well?
Tom Warren.
Yes, part of the project, it extended the town water. So this lot, two, got a little over 200 feet. So this lot is now connected into municipal water system.
Okay. Yes?
Hi, I'll introduce myself. I'm Janet Aldrich, and I'm the head of CR News. It's a group of freelancers, and Mr. Abramson is a member and an abutter. And so he had to be somewhere else. He asked if I would cover this meeting tonight. He is available to comment. I could get him on the phone, but he can't be here tonight, so I just wanted to, that's why I'm covering.
Okay. I don't know if we actually formally announced that this meeting is being recorded, but I think it's pretty obvious. Thank you. Do you know what his comments would have been?
No, because he doesn't really know what the meeting.
I see, okay.
I have a question. Just going forward, is there any concern for any other property in here? I mean, with, without, none would occur?
Again, I think the important part would have had to know exactly what the well was and to do the decommissioning in accordance with the guidelines. So if it were a drilled well and the void space wasn't filled in, depending on what happened to the ground surface, I don't know where the location of it is. I'm assuming it was in the foundation area.
I could tell you it was in the back corner of the prop, right in the back corner of the house, in that area somewhere. I didn't even know it was there until I raised the house and I reached in, you know, to start loading this debris into the dumpster when I reached in. There wasn't a piece of metal in that house. There wasn't any bunches in it. When I reached in, I pulled a pipe out of the mine. It was almost that, it was like a two inch, five inch and a half pipe. And I pulled it and it was about, I'd say pretty close to 30 feet long. By the time I pulled it out, I said, oh, this is a point well. And I thought nothing of it, because I never really looked at the board of health permit, because I can't do a septic in town, so I passed that on to the installer. And all I was just concerned with was getting a permit to take the building down and build a house, which took me three months to get from the time I started the process. So once I got it, the permit from the board of health, I was all excited. I passed it on to everybody that I had a go-to, and I got the building permit and started, a demolition permit and started building. Basically, I just accidentally, I didn't even look at that board of health permit, to be honest with you, to see that I had to get it touched.
Did that one was not on the records anywhere?
No.
No, all that would have been pre- code required.
So there's no remedial action that could be taken at this point?
No.
So I would like to grant our.
Well, if not, if you have to.
I guess we always, however it's taken out, right? But we wouldn't have any in this case.
No. I'm not that we accept the request for variance from return of Grattan Board of Health Rights, Chapter 330.
Second. Any more discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's two favor. Number where is, where is the option?
Thank you.
Thank you for your parents.
Just as a kind of a question on procedure from here. Is it written, is it a written decision given to Al? What happens from here, Ira?
Yeah, they'll, we'll produce a written decision, and then I'll do the certificate compliance with the subject.
Okay.
I have just a quick question. We're kind of on a crunch date here with people who we did, they bought the house. They're trying to, even before Christmas, trying to get their kids in school before January 2nd.
Right, January 2nd. They've got a kid named Blue, cutest boy in the world, one.
Without the occupancy permit, they can't go forward and sign the kid up for school. So I was just wondering what's the procedure and how long does it take to get? Probably be just a couple of days.
Thank you. Okay, yeah. Obviously, if you need anything else from me, you know, the board or you, Ira, please feel free to call.
Okay.
Do you know how to get over?
Super.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you so much, thank you. I've become really good friends with them, so thank you.
Really sorry to talk about that.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Wasn't your intention of my own.
Thank you, it was great.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, Sammy?
Sammy.
Okay, maybe a couple more minutes before the next agenda.
Yeah, this isn't really, the second one is just.
The discussion.
Yeah, you can start the discussion.
Okay, so the next item is a discussion of a deed restriction from 95 Lost Lake Road. Here we are.
So I think you're aware of some of the things that went on. It was installation that didn't go quite according to the permit and the plan in order to resolve not essentially redoing the entire subject system. The proposal was to do the deed restriction to keep large animals off the leaching area. The leaching area is supposed to be H20 or heavy-duty loading to accommodate any traffic that might have gone to the barn. And particularly, if there were animals sort of stable or had a paddock over it, the animals tend to crush distribution boxes and leaching areas. So what you have is a proposal for a deed restriction with a language that essentially says, per the Grattan Board of Health, the property located in 95 Lost Lake Road, Grattan, Mass. Will, shall be restricted from housing, keeping, boarding, or raising any large livestock, to wit horses or cows, to keep them off of the leaching area.
Is that a sufficient definition of large livestock, horses and cows?
That's something for you to decide. I don't have any objection to it.
Don't have any offense?
No.
Just the right offense.
Yeah. And if you do agree to the deed restriction, and we would just modify the subject permit to not have that H20 loading requirement on it.
And even though the system wasn't built as designed, it's okay?
I don't have.
Given this restriction?
I don't have the as-built and certification, so everything that I saw is done in accordance with the dimensions and the materials, elevations and location, everything.
Okay. And any absence of large animals, if there's no problem, should be no problem?
Right, so the barn, whatever we want to call it, is listed on the assessment record as a stable. The concern would have been if there were access and dropping off hay and other materials to the barn.
Because I assume vehicles over there is not a good idea.
No, that would be probably good as well.
If somebody in the future wanted to have horses there, then they would have to go ahead and redo the system?
Right now, it would be restricted from doing it by this recording, so you'd have to come back to the Board of Health to have the restriction removed, and then you'd have to come up with an idea on how to keep them off of the leaching area.
Well, but couldn't they just upgrade the system to?
You could do that, then.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
To make it H20 loading.
Yeah.
Yes, a question?
How, how long do you think, or I don't know how long you would think it would take James Warren to take out that and put in the H20? Would that be like a day provision or?
I would say an installer could do it in a day.
Well, so it is just a matter of replacing what's there with.
Yeah, essentially, because the elevation should be set as far as the elevation, and it's just swapping out the channels. However, based on the amount of time it's taken to get here, I'd never comment on how long it will take. But yes, it's relatively simple process.
Well, he has told December 31st, correct?
He has told December 31st to do the work. After that, you would have to find someone else, somebody else. That's the complicating.
Yeah, and we're not here to fight the decision at all, so, you know, whatever.
I don't usually like to see restrictions like this, just because, well, I think that the applicants usually will adhere to them if the property gets passed on to the next owner. They might not, you know? I mean, even though they will obviously, because it's recorded, know about it. They might not know about the time they decide to get, you know?
Right, right.
Since apparently the property looks like it would be a good place to stable animals.
Well, they don't have paddocks up any longer.
Right.
But the barn does have stalls in it, so.
And a hayloft, and there's room for a riding ring and a couple paddocks.
Okay, and this was not your intention to do this if you hadn't built the right system?
Well, no, right.
We wouldn't have restricted, we wouldn't restrict it yet.
It would not have, yeah. But when he first approached me about it, he said.
No, it wasn't your intention, though, house, not house.
No, right, right. And he had asked us to not do it for other reasons, for moving, having to move the septic system someplace else, and I said, well, that's fine, okay, let, you know, flow. But it never came before the board, and he just assumed that because we had discussed it momentarily, he never looked at the permit again after it was accepted. And August 1st is when I filed for everything and had it all done. And he says, well, that's not what his notes say. So we had intended to, you know, do the correct system.
So he is Warren?
Yeah, she is Warren.
Well, as long as, I mean, as long as it can be redone at some other point in time, if somebody wanted to do it, then that would be fine. I don't know, I mean.
Well, if it were done right now, if he had to replace it right now, then it would be a simple process, right? It'd be much more typical after he's covered it.
Right, that would be a full excavation. Right now, it doesn't have the topsoil on it, or shouldn't have the topsoil on it.
And I can, can I ask, is he, has he done everything to be able to cover it now? As far as your concern?
Other than the fact that it's not stalled in accordance with the plan.
Okay, yeah, because actually, he called me this morning and wanted to know if there'd been a resolution of this yet, and wanted to cover it this week, while the weather's.
Because this system, the installation of this system does violate the terms of our approvals, right?
It was designed and stated on the plan that it would be H20 loading. Your permit specifically says that it should be H20 loading.
And he can't read, so that didn't make sense?
I'm not going to answer that.
That's just not.
Yeah. Again, this is another one where it was moved without your permission as well. That's what I spoke to you about when we first started doing this.
I'm going to agree to a deed restriction. I'd actually much prefer seeing the system that was permitted to be built.
Well, I think we would be okay with that. No, I mean, be okay with requiring it to be built the way it is.
Require the permit.
I mean, we pursued the deed restriction to consider it as an alternative, right? So we could get the thing done. If it can really be replaced quickly with the heavier duty components, I think we'd prefer that, not, in my mind, not so much because of the large animals, but because of trucks.
Sure, sure, I mean, not to mention, like I said, they did violate the, you understand?
It was not built according to the permit.
Yeah. So can we do this additional? If they can't put it in the system to the full specification of the permit, then require this deed restriction.
But I think there's no doubt that it can be done in accordance with the planned conditions. I mean, it's a matter of just the proper achievers.
Okay.
And who doing the work that he was assuming is hired here.
Time, there's no time criticality here, right?
The time criticality is that you revoked his license to install in the town of Grattan coming December 31st. And this isn't something that's really.
No, but there's not time criticality for a deed restriction.
No, no.
I was making fun of a deed restriction in January.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, again, it's right now, I don't have any objection. The whole goal was to protect that leaching area from being disturbed and have a problem by having large animals on it or driving it. If the deed restriction is satisfactory to both parties and we don't have anything on top of it, the system is perfectly fine, I mean, the plastic is going on the left board.
Does the house, we prefer to get this done by the 31st correctly?
Yeah, then that's the way it should go.
Yep.
So how do we, how do we?
The simple answer will be, we will say to Mr. Warren that that's not how it was approved. This approval is for the H20 loading. Your plans reflect H20 loading, put it in accordance with the plan.
So we don't roll down a deed, I mean, we can always give you a deed restriction. That's not a problem. I like it, yes, I would like it to be done correctly too, and if you want it to be done correctly, I think we do. We might have a whole barn and that whole area there, and then tell people, sorry, you can't use it. All right, well, let's hold this view to the fire.
Yeah, that's fine, again, I mean, it's acceptable.
And he has to get it done by the 31st?
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
All right.
Yeah, so we don't need to roll down the deed restriction today?
You could vote on it and agree to it, but they don't have to do the recording. So if it comes to a kind of crunch, you can do, you know, vote. Just because you've approved it, doesn't mean it has to be exercised and recorded. The only difference is that the subject system won't be able to receive a certificate of compliance until we have one, we have a recording of the deed restriction or the corrected system.
Okay, I see, so it would be good to vote today?
Yeah, there's no problem, voting for it and approving, it's just whether or not they'll record it. It's not a question.
I'm motion. Okay, I move that we accept a deed restriction on the subject system of 95, well, on the property at 95 Lost Lake Road, to restrict against the large animals.
Second.
All there?
Aye.
Aye.
And in the interim, if your decision is not to record it, then we just instruct him to complete the work that was permitted and.
Yeah, I think we'd like to do that.
We like a nice letter from the Board of Health that says, please complete the work as permitted.
We would definitely like to see it as permitted.
As we would too. And once they contact him, will he be calling you?
I'll have to be called to do another inspection and I'm going to complete your work, yes.
So can we make sure that he knows that we're watching him very carefully until the 31st?
I can put the emphasis on that, I guess.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
How will Santa will come to you?
I agree.
So then the next step is we should tell Jim now that he should, that the decision is to complete it as permitted?
Permanent.
Yes.
And then once all the news happens, then he needs to call you.
Correct.
Like you're not going to read his mind.
Correct.
As soon as, as soon as he hangs up from you.
Yes.
He's to call Ira. And then you, but just let Ira know he should be expecting a call and see how long it takes.
Okay, got it.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
No problem.
I know the next item is also discussion, is that we can start?
Yes.
So I didn't have anything in my packet about this.
I don't either. I assume, just for the purpose of playing the popular, I'd say 1719 West Main Street.
So here's, it's sort of a minor dilemma for me, if you want to call it out. This is a permit that was issued in September 2017 on a property that we found a failed system on that goes back before that period of time. So your Board of Health variance, the notice of decision, has an expiration date of 2/18/18. The work hasn't started. So your approval was that the system had to go in before they could get occupancy of this two-unit building. So permit's technically valid.
Which building is this?
1719. No, it's a duplex, just sort of down the road a little bit. So subject permit's been sitting here waiting for fees, whatever, for a bit. Hasn't even been picked out, but it's still technically valid. Nobody's moved into the building. But your notice of decision is very clearly put as 2/18/18 when you were voting on it. So that's your variance approval, which is now expired. So do we need your variance approval? Want to vote on it tonight? Want to have a hearing to do it? I mean, it's unusual that we've had something expire and the work hasn't even started yet.
Well, I think it needs to be, I think it needs to have, be very specific. I mean, this, yeah, this has to get redone and it has to have a good date on it and has to get fixed, yeah?
Or at least come back and actually have us take a vote on an extension or a reschedule.
Okay. So whichever, whether we rehear it or just come in for a, basically a vote for the board to extend it. Two different things, one is much more complicated.
I assume that the facts of that we voted on when we gave the approval haven't changed.
No, no, they haven't.
It's the same situation, same design. We would be, if we extended it, we would be extending the same design.
Right.
I think they'd have to come and ask for it.
I think that would be perfect to ask. I just didn't want to overstep my bounds and tell them, I just needed to ask them if you wanted to go through a whole peering process. The difference that this one is versus the other ones, if this permit is technically valid, the regular decision is still within its time, unlike the other ones we had on FER, which both of these permits expire. So what does the termance part? This one's actually good until September 2021. But your decision, which is part of this document, said no, we'll begin until you've had a certificate of compliance. So kind of a catchphrase to.
So the building has been empty?
Yes. So that's, yes, request that appeared before the board?
Yes.
That's easy, no?
So does that matter, done, right?
Yeah, and just as another point of interest, the, some of the recordings that they did, they didn't do correctly, so I'm going to ask for them to do them the right way.
Okay. New office business, we have four oh one Asher Road. Is there some new information?
No, I'm just looking for, we keep getting questions from the neighbors on what's happening with it. I haven't heard a word from Jason. Jason was supposed to follow up with the director at DPH.
And you haven't heard from DPH at all?
I.
At least not formally, yeah, nothing in writing.
Right, and, and I got the answer that they were waiting for their council to come back from vacation. Uh, after that period of time I followed up, he basically wrote back and said that his conversation with me is what the department's policy is and what was done is okay. It's not, Jason wanted something, right, but Jason was supposed to talk to him directly. I asked him and I haven't heard back. But in, in my opinion, I'm comfortable with what I prepared before for a final decision for the board. After speaking with the director, he said everything was perfectly okay as far as the department's concerned, as far as religious extensions. And I stand highly for the, the ethical thing should or could come to a final decision by the board.
So we've been in touch with Jason, ask him what he's done or not?
I have sent him at least three emails now.
So if the subject comes up again, what, what targets do we have?
Just the thing that I drafted, you know, outlined what the regulations are, our communication with both DEP and Department of Public Health. And the determination wants that what was done during the holiday celebration was an exempted activity, which includes the takeaway of the, we'll call it excess meat as part of the celebration. So there's nothing that was left unattended to by the Board of Health. Future events could be occurring.
So it's not that different from the advice we got admittedly at the last minute from the town council.
Is he going to go forward with that either?
He and I have spoken since then. He wants to be able to put in an industrial waste holding tank, which there's nothing that says he can't do that. He said he wasn't going to do any more events, is what he told the building commissioner. He's not, you know, preparing meat down there for, for sale or anything.
The holding tank would require a permit, right?
No, for us, believe it or not, it's not something covered under Title V. It's literal with the industrial waste holding tank regulation, which is a self-certification. That's what the engineer naked presented at night. So it's a two thousand gallon tank with a secondary containment in on water. And they just report it to DEP as being in place and it was an operation and maintenance plan with it. So that would have dealt with the products.
So somebody comes and empties it?
When he was proposing it, he had a contract with the company coming to take it, much like the renters.
Well, I would assume if anything happens, you're going to hear about it the second he pulls his nose off the door.
I, I would have.
I, I guess I'm wondering whether we should be suspicious that he would want such a tank without any.
Can't worry about it?
I, I was suspicious and I actually put in an email questioning why he would want to do that if he's not going to be producing any meat down there, that he would need to get permits from the state of locals. He spent six thousand dollars on a tank and he wants to put it in, I guess.
Okay.
You know, if he wanted to hold a religious event down there, it's the same on him with the DEP letter that says you can't have blood going to the wetland in the pro.
And as you point out, having the tank actually makes it possible for him to do a better job of handling the load off.
Yeah. So yes, I asked that question because I was concerned. And he, he was changing his mind and he was going to do more events or that he thought that he was okay and could do processing.
We'll find out. When is it? In September?
This year it was in August. I don't know if their holidays are like the Jewish holidays, will they change with the calendar?
I guess we'll find out in six months or so. All right.
But, you know, we have, there's no critical mass. I mean, we're not having another thing happening anytime soon. I'm sure the neighbors are looking for an answer. I really don't see why we need to keep going months into this. Jason hasn't gotten an answer. And the Department of Public Health isn't giving you an answer, which is more problematic to me. If we can try and push this state agency that works with municipalities and the state government to get answers, I can push that button.
Well, let's see if we can push Jason's mind.
Certainly, the neighbor certainly wants something, you know, right?
And, and I.
Yeah, why not? You should. Um, so we're done with that.
But I, I would ask that you both speak with Jason and see where he's at with this.
All right.
Okay.
And, and to ask for a sort of a date certain where we can just wrap this up. Seems to be dangling a lot, aren't we, I'm sure.
Susan, have you had a chance to look at the minutes? Uh, I looked at the minutes and I just wanted to make it clear because it wasn't entirely clear from the description of that first. There, there were two motions under that first item. There was a motion to revoke a privilege and then a motion to allow installing, the finishing of the installing of two jobs, including the one we discussed tonight, uh, by September thirty-one.
Okay.
And I seconded both of them. And, and both motions carried two to none.
Okay.
Because, you know, it just looked a little bit unclear. It looked like it was two motions, but they only wanted one vote and one second, but.
Okay, I'll make that mark.
And that's the only answer there. Do you see a minute?
I didn't see anything.
You want to leave for seven?
I know that we have seven minutes, uh, twelve, three, eighteen.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, it looks like we're at the end of our agenda unless there's something else we need to decide. Or do handle.
You did the permits already, subject ones and?
Well, we should take the, we should take the vote on the.
Tobacco.
Tobacco. So I move that we accept the tobacco permits as properly issued.
Okay.
That was for the Boston Road Market?
Right.
Aye.
Aye. So two boys approach aye for accepting those two tobacco permits.
Do you have a vote defense by chance?
Well, I guess that's it, it was there.
You need to go on or?
What I wanted to do was put the notes on the permits. Yeah, I did that as well.
I guess, should we adjourn? We don't really have them, right?
Yes, yeah, we're just.
I know that we adjourn until two thousand and nineteen.
Then when's our last meeting?
January seventh.
Yeah. Favor?
January seventh.
Aye.
Aye. So.